The United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation under God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. A few items before we really kind of dig into the agenda. I do have some counselors participating remotely, and so I do just need to ask a couple of questions, and that is whether or not it was practical for you to be here tonight and is present with you. So I will call on individual counselors and to go through that process. So Counselor Sanders?
It was not, I'm sorry, the magic word was...
Practical.
I wasn't able to be there tonight, and I am present and alone. And I am alone.
Thank you. Counselor Burns?
I was unable to be here tonight in person, and I am alone.
Thank you. And Counselor Blackstone?
I was unable to be there, and I am alone.
Thank you. I apologize. I'm looking across the room at the small screen, and so I'm like squinting, wondering who I'm calling on. So I'll do my best to make sure that I see everybody's hands. So we will move forward now. The first item that we have is, well, actually, before we do that, I just wanted to mention a few things about this kind of new normal that we have with our meetings. And Steve had sent me an email the other day talking about some of the meeting etiquette, which I think was a not-so-subtle way to say that we needed to improve our etiquette. A few things that he's already gone through, but I just wanted to make sure that I reiterated. And so one is to make sure that we don't speak unless recognized by the chair. We have, as Steve mentioned, the, for counselors, the agenda item, the enormous agenda function is working, and for the public, you can just raise your hand. You can use the function on Zoom, and the town manager will be monitoring that. If you're unfamiliar with that, it is in the Participants section at the bottom of the screen. Also, if everyone can stay on mute unless you're recognized by the chair, by me to speak. Again, that's to try to avoid any sort of disorderly meeting etiquette. Also, an important reminder is when people are home, just to make sure that you're doing private, not to do private things during a meeting. The meeting is a public meeting, and it's being televised, so just, it's important for everybody to keep that in mind. And that's all. So if anybody has any questions, let me know, and we can move forward. So on our agenda, the first item is Public Forum. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to come in. For those people at home who are watching, Chris Hawkins, I'm the town moderator here, one of the committees of the election. And we had a meeting, election officials had a meeting afterwards to do kind of a lessons learned, things we can do to improve our processes going forward. And just wanted to take the opportunity to share some of these things with the, with the public, so people have an idea of how you like your life, and what we're trying to do in the future to improve things. So we had a 6,065 ballots balled cast, 2,309, or 38% of those were absentee ballots. Regular ballots cast, meaning live and in person, were 3,756, 62%. We had a little, we had 9,052 people on the checklist from the day started. Based on that number, it's a 67% turnout, but the checklist number is always a moving target because people move in and out of town all the time. We registered somewhere between 300 and 400 people on the day. About the absentee ballots, we pre-processed 2,088 absentee ballots on the Friday prior. We had four challengers from the Republican Party, one challenger from the Democratic Party, and we were in that process, absolutely no problems whatsoever. So 90% of our absentee ballots were pre-processed. Out of the 2,088, five were disqualified for either having an unsigned affidavit, a contact, this is not required by law, but as a best practice, we reach out to the people and ask them to come at different opportunities to fix. To recap, you know, cast a ballot, and then we cancel the disqualified ballots. Four folks took advantage of that opportunity, so we had one person who did not, who was disqualified and did not fix. That's a tiny, tiny fraction, and we, so we feel pretty good about that. That's just the overview of the numbers that we processed, which dovetail, and the pre-processing of absentee ballots leads us into the first lesson learned. The pre-processing is a feature of state law in light of the COVID thing. Talking about this with Terry Littlefield, who does obviously the vast bulk of the work, we felt pretty strongly that the pre-processing is a good thing. Saves us a lot of time on Election Day. We saw a major increase in absentee ballots because of the, I believe, of the increased availability of it. Hopefully, people will continue to take advantage. We would, we would suggest supporting, in any way we can, efforts to enshrine the pre-processing of absentee ballots in law, regardless of whether the COVID stuff stays in place or not. So we would ask the council, to the extent appropriate, to consider supporting, helping us support that effort. I think at the high school, we had absolutely no one who declined to wear a mask. We did, we had a separate voting area set up for people who did not, or would not, or could not, wear a mask. Nobody took advantage of that. I think Clay Mitchell tells me that there were one or two people at the elementary school, but compliance was fantastic. I haven't heard of any outbreaks as a result. So we feel pretty good about our COVID response, about our COVID measures. They're consistent with the guidelines proposed by the state epidemiologist. We continue to keep our eye on that issue, and we're going to modify our protocols as necessary going forward. We talked about whether to retain our two-war system, which was put in again to ameliorate the COVID situation. We probably could have handled 3,500, you know, the people who voted live, we probably could have handled them at the high school, combining all of our resources and forces in one place. But it strongly depends whether or not there's going to be pre-processing of absentee ballots, because if there were 6,000, that would have been a bit of a, a bit of a strain. But we're just going to keep our eye on that issue going forward. Not necessarily probably for town elections, but for statewide elections is just something, we'll kind of play that by ear for now. I kind of followed some discussions in the community Facebook pages about the voting process in the immediate aftermath of the election, and which is unlike me, responded to some of the, to some of the things, and I think fairly successfully. We think there's always, it's always a good idea to focus effort on the mechanics of voting. So what do I mean by that? People are concerned, you know, is my ballot actually being counted? Which is, what happens when I put it in the machine? I have 100% confidence that your ballot is being counted if you put it in the machine, because we've done, been through two recounts in this town during my administration. And I know that machine is completely accurate, provided that the ballots are filled out properly, and that you follow the instructions. So I've given you sample ballots, and these are available on the Secretary of State's website. I think a small fraction, it's still important that people just don't read the instructions carefully and follow them. So if you look in the upper left-hand corner of your sample ballot, you will see, fill in the circle completely of the person you want to vote for. Do not vote for more than one person. So what we see fairly, fairly commonly is, you'll see somebody circle and fill in the circle for a candidate that they want, then they'll put an X through it, then they'll fill in the circle for a different candidate. The machine can't read that. That's no vote. People need to understand that. What you need to do, if you think you've made a mistake on your ballot, is find an election official and say, "I've made a mistake. I need a new ballot," and we will give you one, and the old one will be canceled and not put into the machine. So I just want to urge people, take your time, take a look at your ballot, make sure it says exactly what you want to say. That's a far bigger problem than, is the machine actually doing what it's supposed to be doing? That's not a problem at all. So I think what we're going to do is, this is an idea that Cliff Chase had, I think it's a brilliant one, set up some kind of a monitor when you're waiting in line that says, pay it, you know, read the instructions carefully. Here are some examples of ballots that are not going to work. You know, writing war and peace on your ballot, no one is going to read it. If you put the word "no" or you circle a candidate's name, the machine can't read that. We don't want you to throw your ballot away. So that kind of thing, we're just going to make some efforts to, just to, you know, maybe it's 1% or 2%, but still, we want to make sure that when people come down to vote, that they're doing it, that their vote is actually counting properly. We hate to see people throwing their ballots away. I mentioned earlier, and you'll be, you'll all be happy to know that we got one write-in vote for Justin Bieber. Unfortunately, he didn't make it. He's also Canadian and not 35, but that kind of stuff, that, that happened. So always happy to take input from folks on what we can do to improve the process. We had, and I want to give a lot of thanks to the members of the council who are all volunteering, did a great job. We had 70 volunteers. We had so many volunteers, we had to turn people away. But the community responded really, really well. The voters were all fantastic. We had a very, somewhat hectic, but very smoothly run day, and we feel pretty good about the process, and I want to thank everybody. Terry and her staff, as usual, did an absolutely amazing job. Mr. Fornier, his folks, Public Works, the police department, for, and we're very grateful for everybody that it, that it went very well. So that's really all I have to say, and I appreciate your time.
And thank you for everything that you've done. It was an amazing process to witness, and I think that between yourself and Clay Mitchell and Cliff Chase, and then Terry and her staff, as well as all of the town staff, it was really just a seamless day. And, and everyone who came out, and all the volunteers, and everybody in the community. It really, you know, you hear about these things on the news, and we just didn't see it here in Newmarket, and it's impressive.
I don't, I don't want to forget, we had some incredible high school student volunteers this year. They were amazing, and I want to thank them as well. I think I-
They were here, well, here via Zoom last week, our last meeting, two weeks ago.
Awesome. Good.
Counselor D'Amont, did you have a comment?
I did have a question for you, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no, no.
I've always voted in person. I've not used an absentee ballot. I know that they're an option if I need it. But obviously, there was a very large push this year to get it out there, that they are an option, that they should be used. In your opinion, since you're kind of more in tune to this type of information than probably the average, do you foresee the state continuing this, or are there discussions coming about really trying to promote that, like, no-fault absentee balloting, so that option always exists? Or do you think that, once the pandemic subsides, we might go back to the old way? I, I only ask because it seems like, from a lot of the folks that I bumped into, they really did appreciate having that opportunity to fill out their ballot where they were comfortable, where they could have the information, you know?
I would, I will say that this is a political issue. There was an effort last year, there was a bill introduced last year, that I think that passed both houses to, for, for no-excuse absentee voting, that was vetoed. And I think, and I read the, I read the veto rationale, and I think part of the rationale was that live and in-person voting is a great New Hampshire tradition and promotes civic engagement. My personal opinion is that voting is civic engagement, and so increased access to voting is, is a good thing, provided rational safeguards are in place, like we have. So I would urge anybody who thinks, who believes that no-excuse absentee voting is a good thing, to contact your state legislators and be in favor of it. That's, that's the best advice I can give.
I appreciate it.
I want to, I want to just, I think pre-processing is a good thing either way, because the way we, the way we do it, particularly in statewide elections, is I have Clay Mitchell come in and just deal with absentee ballots. And he's very graciously donates his time to get that done, because it's, it's a lot of work to deal with them, and it's very distracting. So regardless of whether no-excuse absentee ballot, absentee voting becomes part of the law, I think pre-processing is a good thing. As the moderator, I want to, I want to facilitate voting. That's my job. So increased access to voting for me is a good thing. So I'm, I guess I'm in favor of no-excuse absentee voting with, with appropriate safeguards in place.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So contact your state legislators, if you think it's a good idea or a bad idea, however you feel about it.
Thank you. Are there any other members from the public who wish to speak tonight? Seeing none, I will close public comment at 7:18. The item that we have on our agenda is for the council to accept and approve the November 18th, 2020 meeting minutes. So I would accept a motion, a motion to approve those. Can't speak tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 18th, 2020 meeting minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Were there any comments or changes, questions about the minutes? I am seeing none. So if you could call the roll. Counselor D'Amont?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone? Counselor Wraybet?
Aye.
Counselor Piper?
Aye.
Counselor Burns?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes by the chair. Thank you. And the next item is the town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to follow up with what the moderator was just saying, we should have guidance from the Attorney General's office and the NHMA on how to hold deliberative session with the pandemic still in place. It does look like what I outlined a few meetings ago. And as the chair knows, I reached out to the chair of the school board of schools to try to maybe have a meeting so we could have a similar election on both sides, so it's not a, difficult. I, I just don't see a place where we could hold that many people six feet apart safely. So on my written report, as of November 30th, we had less than five, or 0.04% of the population active cases, and 77 cumulative cases, or 0.8% of the population. And 1,940 people from Newmarket have tested with the PCR test, or 21%. We do not do the antigen tests in those numbers yet. So just thought 21% is a good portion to be tested of the community. We were notified this, that Newmarket was rewarded Community Development Block Grants from our application that we had public hearings on earlier this month. This includes $500,000 for new road water line upgrade. This is not the storm water line upgrade that we're asking for the bond for. This is the water system upgrade. $500,000 for heating and water supply for the Great Hill Terrace for Newmarket Housing Authority. $25,000 to study establishing a daycare with, for linked together, and $45,000 for the Recreation Department and for after-school, the van for senior center. We're still waiting to hear on some of the nonprofit and charitable Community Development Block Grants. Those are just behind on their system. While these all still need to be approved by the governor and council, it's a significant step forward towards addressing these issues, and I want to commend everybody for, for working on that. The next item is that normally at this town in Maivia, we'd be inviting everyone to attend our annual tree lighting ceremony. However, due to COVID-19, we're limiting the tree lighting ceremony to in-person attendance only for those who be speaking at the event this year. We're encouraging people to watch it live on Channel 13, and also on Channel 13's Facebook page Friday night, I mean Friday night, Saturday night, excuse me, Saturday night at 5:00 PM. In addition, the Rec. Department is introducing a new adopted tree branch in Arbor Park Initiative. This initiative provides a perfect opportunity to still partake in a town event by coming downtown at your own leisure to view the Newmarket tree and all the Arbor Parks decorations in person. Just for those who don't know, it's the one across from the post office. And the Rec. Department really wants to thank everybody, and hopefully next year, we can have a bigger and in-person ceremony, and have a lot more to celebrate. We've been notified by Revision Energy that will be, Revision Energy will be providing two Nissan electric vehicle charging stations to the town for no cost. We only have to cover the cost of installation, and this continues the town's sustainability efforts. It's my intention to install these at Town Hall and at the community center. I got to say, Revision had the program. I sent them an email. They said, "Do you want two?" And we said, "Yes." So it was very that simple, and it was great to work with them on that. After the close of town council agenda last week, we received a one-year proposal from Casella Waste for collection of our manufactured solid waste and recycling. As the council's aware, we thought it would be best to revisit multi-year proposal after the pandemic. So the new rates are, currently, we pay $158.82 a ton for MSW. They'll be going up $8.73 to $167.55. And recycling is the big one. Currently, we pay $257.90 per ton. That'll be going up $14.82 to $272.08. Just, I was asked at the Budget Committee, should we stop recycling? And I don't, and I informed them from our conversations with the council, that was the council's feeling that it's still best social practice to continue recycling, even though if, where probably about, not even 20 years ago, we were making money off recycling. I mean, that was a profit area for us, but due to the Chinese market and the oversaturation that they had, they shut it down, and they're not accepting recyclables, and this is where we are. So I'm going to ask the council to approve this at the next meeting, suspend the rules. There'll be a couple things next meeting, just because it's the end of the calendar year, we'll have to get it in. But in addition, I will be increased, asking to be increasing the price of the bags shortly. Again, for the public to get ready for that. The bags will be increasing, just because we're getting hit on this side, so we need to increase it on the, on the other side. Okay, so we've been receiving several complaints about noise on one local business. As every council is aware, they've been, received emails about the stone charge. The police chief and I are actually going to meet with the business owner tomorrow to determine what we can do to lessen the impacts on the neighbors. I was informed tonight that they have a serious malfunction of their heating system, so we do not have to worry about that for this weekend. But we are going to work with them. But I'm also going to ask the town council ordinance committee to review our current ordinance. Our ordinance is different than most of the other noise ordinances in the area, that we don't have a specific time for items. We only say reasonableness. So it really kind of puts the police in a position, I mean, I understand during the day, reasonableness is a good thing, but most communities say, "Hey, at 11 o'clock, shut it down," or "10 o'clock, shut it down." We don't have that. We have reasonableness. And I'm going to do some research, and Chief Tru has, I'm going to have one officer work on this as well, to come up with a revision to the ordinance. Just so the council's aware, when we issued the permits for the outdoors dining due to the pandemic, we did not put any noise restrictions in at that time, just due to the fact we were trying to help these businesses stay afloat. And, you know, and we understand, and we know it's difficult for the neighbors, and we're going to work with them as well. And we understand that what they're going through, so we are going to talk with the business owners to see if we can be better neighbors going forward. Not saying they're bad neighbors, but just to hear the plight of both sides, and I know it's going to work. To be honest, throughout the entire pandemic outdoor dining situation, we never had a complaint until now. So I got to say, it was very successful. I've talked to a number of other communities about the same item. We're all saying, after the pandemic, we're going to, probably everyone's going to reevaluate outdoor dining and some of the rules that are put in place on it. I mean, I know one of the things everybody said they were concerned about was, which, you always say, "Well, we have to rope it in," because you're worried about people leaving their spots. I don't think there are any, any issues with people like bringing alcoholic beverage down the street in any community that I've heard of from my talks. So I think it's, it's an interesting factor, and I think it'll be an interesting discussion to have next year on what outdoor dining will look, not only here, but other communities. So other than that, that's all I have tonight. Madam Chair.
Counselor D'Amont?
I just had one point of clarification and one question. As Steve had mentioned, at the Budget Committee, there was a question regarding recycling, and it was more, just to their credit, it was about the, the cost aspect, not so much that anybody wants to not recycle. So in case anybody's listening to that, thinking that anybody out there doesn't want to clean up, that's not the case. But I do appreciate you mentioning it nonetheless, because, you know, it is a question, you know, we have to ask every now and then. And then the- And then the one question that I had for the two car, car charging stations, just so I can understand it correctly, they are Nissan brand, but not Nissan specific.
Correct.
Awesome.
Yep.
Curious, because I know that, like, some of the Teslas are Tesla-only and...
My understanding is the same out, same plug that we currently have on the library.
Sweet. That's all.
Council Kiper?
My question was, would it ever make sense, particularly if the price of recycling and municipal waste goes up, to have a committee look at that? Because I've done a little bit of research just, you know, around, and it seems like the big issue is the sorting, and I think back when I was a little kid in Stratum, you know, we all sorted our own recycling, which obviously was inconvenient, but probably made it a lot easier to sell the glass and the metal, and, I mean, from what I've heard the other day, the only plastic they can really recycle is soda bottles and milk jugs. And so, a lot of that's getting contaminated, so I just wonder if maybe, if it particularly if it continues going up, which obviously it will be, or if there's not another committee that maybe you should look at that, and maybe if there's options, I don't know.
I will look at the chair on that one, since he is on the Energy and Environment Committee.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that the Energy and Environment Committee at this point would have the bandwidth to really look at that, because I think it's a pretty complicated issue, and I would imagine that whoever looks at it, are, we would definitely want to have a conversation, like, Rick would have to be involved in that conversation, because the alternatives that I've seen, we've probably seen some of the same things, communities that are knocking it out of the park with their, with their recycling efforts because they have storage, people, you know, they, they just have a different system, and it would take a whole mind shift, like, just a, a shift of how we do business. Not to mention, I think that one of the benefits and one of the costs associated with our, our recycling program is the curbside pickup.
Right.
So, when, if that were to go away, you know, I, I, I don't know what that would mean for the usage of recycling in our community. I have no idea what the ramifications would be. So, I, I think it's a great idea to consider looking into it, I just would want to make sh, I don't know that the Energy and Environment Committee could do it, I don't want to speak for them, but I also think Rick would have to be a huge part of that.
And, and I think it, it's always difficult to take something away than it is to give the people something. And with the community having curbside pickup and recycling and grained them, them so long, that, I mean, if we were to go to a transfer station's situation, one, we'd have to find a new location, because I don't think the current location could handle the traffic, and two, I think you get a lot of angry people that they have to go on Saturday to bring their staff in that kind of situation, so I, I, I don't think it's a problem looking at it, but I think it's, it'd be difficult to, to change the mindset, so after so many years.
It would be interesting for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, I look at what, how it just happened in Newfields, you know, they, they eliminated their recycling program, and, you know, there's been a backlash, they, and they tried to reinstate it through town meeting, and they're gonna try again in, in, you know, this coming year, and...
We're happy because we're making money.
We're currently accepting their recycling Murphy, so... I don't know, I don't know what they, there are, I don't think that there are any easy answers, unfortunately. I do wanna, I don't, oh, sorry, Council Blackstone, if you wanna... Go ahead.
You're muted.
Council, Council, it's unmute.
Am I am mute now?
You're on mute. We can hear you.
Okay, great. I, I, on a different topic, I live pretty close to Stone Church, and I've never seen any issue related to it, and I think it's a business that helps define the, the character of the town. And I just wanted to say that I appreciate Steve and the police chief working with them to help the town alive while at the same time being part of the community.
Thank you. And I just will also mention, as far as the noise ordinance goes, I do think it's important to work with all members, and it's, it's really about balance, and as long as we have that in mind, I think that even the, the complaints that we've gotten have been understanding, the, the people who have, who have complained are understanding of the position that the Stone Church is in and other businesses as well, so, but there has to be a balance, and, you know, is it okay to have music really late at night, and, you know, and, and what restrictions might be reasonably be able to, to place on, on any outdoor music venues? So, I do think we should talk about that on the ordinance committee, so maybe after, if Council Brayback and Council Dumas, it's the three of us, right?
Yes.
If we wanna get together and, and come up with a time to meet, that would probably be a good idea. And I'm not seeing any other requests, so I will move on to... Are committee reports available?
Yep. Hi, lady.
Oh, there, it was the yellow that threw me, so move on to committee reports. Are there any, any committee reports? Council Dumas?
The Budget Committee met on Monday, as Steve can tell you, we were there for a budget presentation for the town. Doing this through Zoom and future meetings we'll have through Zoom is not easy, just point of fact. So, just speaking as the liaison from the, the Town Council to the Budget Committee and, you know, vice versa, we really appreciate the, the understanding on all sides that it does take a little bit of time to pass information through. Steve answered as many of the questions as he could that evening. He also, I think at this point, at least two emails filled with morse, when we do our full public hearing and related workshopping, we will have all that information for the Budget Committee, and I, I would expect that things should be fairly smooth sailing. So, I believe our next meeting is going to be next Monday at this point, and that'll be for the school, that'll be their presentation, so that's all I have.
And the public hearing is the fourteenth? December fourteenth?
And there will be another hearing later on for the bond item, if the council will, does adopt that.
And for the ordinance committee, I need to reach out to see where, I wanted to get us through the first holiday before we did anything with that.
Absolutely. Council Kiper?
I had asked Council Brayback to take over for me on the Conservation Commission, I just am having a schedule issue on Thursdays, so she has agreed to do that.
If she's gonna permanently take it, the council will need to vote. Okay. Since you do vote to make appointments. Okay. So...
Before we, before I put it to a vote, Council Brayback, confirm that, that you're comfortable with that, that decision?
Yes.
Perfect. Then I would accept a motion to approve Council Brayback as the committee, as the rep to the Conservation Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve Council Brayback to the Conservation Committee.
Second.
Any questions, comments? If you could call the roll, please. Council Dumas?
Aye.
Council Sanders?
Aye.
Council Blackstone? Excuse me.
Aye.
Brayback?
Aye.
Council Kiper?
Aye.
Council Burns?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passed this time. Thank you. And the Energy and Environment Committee did meet last night, let me just pull up my notes real quick. So, we met last night, and, oh, that's not done, that's okay. We really just kind of focused on a, a couple, pretty big items, and so, one is formulating the goals for the committee, and I think that it probably won't be long before there's a proposal in front of the council from the Energy and Environment Committee that would, a resolution that would ask that we support a commitment to using all renewable energy by, I think the date was twenty thirty, there, so that's gonna be batted around a bit in the, during, in the Energy Committee. I don't think that everyone is of the same mind, so we have some work to do on the committee before that comes to the council. I think everyone is, in theory, supportive of that idea, it's just a question of how, you know, whether, whether the resolution is made and then the objectives follow, or if the objectives are stated with the resolution, and I think that that's kind of the sticking point at the moment. And that was really the, the biggest item that we've talked about last night. So, I'm not seeing any other committee reports, so we can move on. The next item that we have is to consider nominations and appointments, and we have a couple this evening. The first is for Gerald Martin, who, to be nominated to the Lamprey River Advisory Committee, and I would accept a motion to approve that application.
I'll make a motion to approve Gerald Martin for the Lamprey River Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Council Dumas?
Aye.
Council Sanders?
Aye.
Council Blackstone? Council Brayback?
Aye.
Council Kiper?
Aye.
Council Burns?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passed this time. And the next item is for Anne Cudworth, who has applied to the Ad Hoc Arts and Tourism Commission, and I would accept a motion to approve that application.
I will make a motion to approve Anne Cudworth to the Ad Hoc Arts and Tourism Commission.
I'll second that.
She is present.
Oh. Any questions or comments, or, oh, Council Sanders?
I'm mute. You have to unmute.
I'm on mute.
Do you want me to say anything?
Well, yeah, well...
I wasn't prepared for a speech, but thank you very much, nominations. I'm new to town, but I come from a background in art and design, and I took a long time to find Newmarket, and I'd like to help it come out of the pandemic stronger and self-aware and, and being a really good citizen.
Great, thank you, thanks so much for being willing to serve.
Sure.
Council Sanders, did you wanna...
Thank you. Anne was participating in our last meeting, and based on those conversations, I think she'd be an excellent person to join us.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please. Council Dumas?
Aye.
Council Sanders?
Aye.
Council Blackstone? Council Brayback?
Aye.
Council Kiper?
Aye.
Council Burns?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passed this time. Thank you. So, now we have some resolutions in the first reading. We don't have any resolutions in the second reading this evening, so... The first is Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, and that's Authorization to Acquire an Easement by Eminent Domain from One Seventy-Seven Ash Swamp Road LLC across an existing accessway on its map, R four, Lot forty-one, One Seventy-Seven Ash Swamp Road property, to provide access to the town's map, R forty-one, Tucker Well Site, and to install any required utilities, drinking water systems, storm water management systems, and to improve the accessway to facilitate such easement uses.
I think I only saw part of that title, I didn't realize the title was half the document.
Is it acceptable for me to read that in title only, seeing as how I think that that was probably the majority of the...
You can ask if there's no objection.
Is there no, any objection to me reading that in title only?
Seems like there's none.
Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, VAC truck repair. Whereas the VAC truck is an important piece of equipment and, and is in need of repair, and whereas the cost of the needed repair is twenty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents, and whereas the cost is shared by the Water, Sewer, and Public Works Departments, now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the Newmarket Town Council authorizes the withdrawal, excuse me, of nine thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-two cents from each of the Water, Sewer, and Public Works Capital Reserve Funds, total of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents for the needed repairs on the VAC truck, first reading December second, twenty twenty. The next item is Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, Resolution Relating to Transferring Funds from the Downtown Tiff Capital Reserve Fund, whereas the May tenth, twenty eleven town meeting established the Downtown Tiff Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of paying the Downtown Tiff debt service, and whereas the Town Council has been appointed as agent to expend from the Capital Reserve Fund for this purpose, and whereas the town has paid debt service interest of seven hundred and eight dollars and nineteen cents on July fifteenth, twenty twenty, and will pay principal and interest totaling seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and twenty-five cents on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, a total transfer of eighty thousand dollars, six hundred and forty-eight, eighty thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-four cents is required to reimburse the general fund for the purpose of paying fiscal year twenty twenty-one Downtown Tiff debt. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve a transfer of eighty thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-four cents from the Downtown Tiff Capital Reserve Fund to the general fund for the purpose of paying the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Downtown Tiff debt service. It's like Groundhog Day.
I know.
For new councilors, we do that every year. The next item is Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash eighteen, requesting the reclassification of South Main Street, whereas the New Hampshire Department of Transportation has requested that South Main Street be turned over to the town, and whereas the town believes it is in the best interest to maintain and control South Main Street as a town public way, now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town manager is instructed to send a letter to the Commissioner of Transportation requesting the reclassification of South Main Street from the intersection of Route one oh eight to Grant Road to a town-maintained road, first reading December second, twenty twenty. The next item is Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, to include a bond for one million dollars to improve the storm water system on New Road on the twenty twenty-one town warrant. Whereas the Town Council wishes to include the following bond on the twenty twenty-one town warrant, and whereas the state revolving loan fund has indicated ten percent forgiven now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the Town Council wishes to include the following proposed warrant article on the town warrant and recommend the warrant article for passage, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million dollars gross budget for the purpose of design and construction of storm water improvements along New Road, including roadway repairs as required, that will qualify the town for federal and state funds, and to authorize the issuance of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, in the amount up to one million dollars, and further to authorize the town to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the interest rate thereon and the maturity and other terms thereof, and further to authorize the town to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, grants, or other funds, if any which may be available for said project that may reduce the amount to be financed with bonds and notes, and to participate in the state revolving fund... and to participate in the State Revolving Fund, which is RSA 486, quote, 14, established for this purchase, for this purpose, and to allow the town to expend such monies as become available. And to authorize the town to take any other action, any other vote relative thereto. It is anticipated that the town will receive up to $100,000 in principal forgiveness from the State Revolving Fund Loan Program. It is the intention of the town that the bond or note repayment shall be paid for by general taxation, two-thirds will be required. First reading December 2nd, 2020.
Madam Chair, the next item on your agenda is the reaffirmation of wearing of face coverings in town. This continues the emergency ordinance that was adopted this summer, um, for another 61 days. While the governor has enacted a mandatory face covering, um, executive order, it does not have any, um, penalties associated with it. So it's our recommendation to continue our emergency order, also in case it's rescinded for whatever reason, because this is, you know, could be different statewide. But we would just continue to reaffirm our face, our emergency order for another 61 days. And it would be appropriate, if the council does so wish, to make a motion to reaffirm, uh, the emergency order to have mandatory face coverings in town.
So I would accept a motion to reaffirm, um.
I will make a motion to reaffirm, um, wearing face coverings in town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And are there any, um, questions or comments about the resolution? Council Dumont?
Sorry, um, do we have a new date in mind for where 61 days puts us?
I don't have it in front of me, but I can get it to you. It will be. February 6th.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other comments or, uh, requests to speak, so I will just, um, make one comment and that's that I completely agree that while the governor has issued a statewide mask mandate, I think that, um, I'm obviously, you know, have been supportive of a mask mandate and I'm appreciative of the governor, finally mandating the state of New Hampshire. But as we've seen in the previous months, that for political reasons, I believe, you know, they were, he was slow to act. And I don't personally trust that, uh, a mask mandate would continue past the, um, the guidelines set forth by the CDC. So I'm definitely supportive of us continuing our mask mandate, for as long as we feel in our community that we need to have it. So seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please. Council Dumont?
No.
Council Sanders?
Aye.
Council Blackstone? Council Brabec?
Aye.
Council Kuyker?
Aye.
Council Burns?
Aye.
Council Weinstein? Aye. I'm just going to ask, just because I didn't hear, um, Council Blackstone, if you could unmute yourself and just reply yea or nay.
Council Blackstone, you're on mute.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next one, Madam Chair, you could, if there's no objection, you could read by title only.
You sure? I shouldn't read all?
No.
The next item is ordinance number four, 2020 dash 2021. It's an ordinance, RE Amendments to Section 32 to 158, Flood Plane Protection Overlay District of the Town of New Market Zoning Ordinance, adopted 214, 1996, as amended through June 21st, 2017. Um, I will allow people to read that on their own.
And that will be going to a public hearing at the next meeting.
And the, it was my first meeting, but, um, the, um, the planning board also had a, had a public hearing. So I don't believe that there was any comment. Um, Council Dumont?
Yes, on that ordinance, just out of general curiosity, is that to be expected every time we get new flood maps from FEMA that we have to re-adopt them and put them into, okay. I, I hadn't done it before, so I wasn't sure.
I don't think that's something that happens very often.
Mm-mm.
No. I think it's been in the works for a long time. So moving on, are there any, uh, closing comments by town councilors?
I have one, but I can't get the thing to.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, I did want to just say, um, circling back to, uh, our, our town manager's comments earlier with the Stone Church and the, uh, the noise level complaints. Um, I, I know I personally have received at least two letters from folks in town. And I just want to say, um, if, if you feel like, as a, as a member of the community that you have an issue and you're not sure if it's going to be heard or not, that email that I got today, I literally had a response from our town manager within 15 minutes. So don't ever be afraid to reach out, especially when we're, you know, dealing with these awkward times especially. Like, i- it's not a bad thing and I, I personally just wanted to reach out to, you know, th- those folks who, who emailed us to just say thank you because, you know, if I don't live there or I'm not experiencing what you're experiencing from, you know, my area of town or related, it is helpful to have that information. And I, I don't think any councillor would ever, you know, not want to, you know, receive emails, whether they're, they're bad or, or even good, because we like kudos too. But, um, again, it was, it was nice seeing that, uh, that folks, you know, wanted to reach out and just discuss it and, um, especially being, uh, aware of what's being presented by COVID-19 and the fact that restaurants don't have the, the freedom to serve like they normally have with, with, uh, you know, national health pandemic. But I, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Council Kuyker?
Um, I just wanted to say a couple of things on the same topic that, um, I have been going to the Stone Church, you know, s- as long as I've been going out, or been going for 20 years. But, you know, in this last, this pandemic, I've been going a lot and it's been really great having the space. It's probably the safest, um, place I've been and one of the only places I've been probably since March, actually. Um, you know, the tables are really spread out. It's a very good use, I think, of the, um, historical, uh, society's parking lot in terms of having people outside, which I think was very necessary for my sanity anyway and probably some other people's. Um, and, you know, they've got, I think, 18 people working there that were able to stay employed, um, you know, through the pandemic, which has been great. And, um, I also live pretty close and I will say that there was some shows in the summer that were pretty loud and they have made a concerted effort to turn it down and I have noticed that. Um, it has been significantly lower. Uh, and also I don't think I've heard them go past nine, uh, you know, ever that I recall. Um, if it, if it was, it wasn't very loud because I didn't notice. So, um, and I think that some of the other neighbors, my neighbors, there's very, I don't know that many people that live around there that, that don't, that would, you know, I mean, I think we've gotten a few complaints, but I, I think if you surveyed every house in a direct circle around there, uh, most of them, I don't think have a problem with it. It's just, I think there's a couple of houses that just geographically get kind of whammed. And then I think with the river, there's a bit of an effect there where sometimes you can hear them. But I think, um, given the, uh, you know, where we are in the fact this is a pandemic and all that and, you know, um, I think, you know, a little, a little, uh, grace on, on, you know, for them would be, would be worth it, I think. And it's been there for what, 50 years?
It's their 50th anniversary.
50 anniversary, so there we go, you know?
I actually thought it was longer. Thank you. Those are important comments. Uh, so I'm not seeing any others. Um, so with that, um, our next meeting is December 16th and I will consider us adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.